Notice that your pages are numbered this year.
What? How about I didn't bring my book because Jeff said I didn't need to. Do I need my book?
Do you want me to go get your book? Well, I always make notes on my book.
I usually make notes on it. You might want to make notes on it.
Well, if I disappear, you can't have the meeting if I'm not here.
Do you want me to run grab it?
Yeah, or just have Christie.
We'll just have Christie bring it up.
Have Christie bring it up, so.
All right, let's start it. We'll have Christie bring it up. Let me know when we're live.
He told you no, and then he brought his.
Bannock County Commissioners back in session. Budget hearings.
A little bit of this, Ken. Real.
Budget hearings. For those who are watching.
You may have done this before, but you're a rookie now.
We're starting off our budget hearings this morning with Adam from IT. So Adam, go ahead.
Good morning, Adam McKinney, Chief Technical Officer. I have IT and 911. We'll do it IT first. It's the easiest one. On the IT A-line budget, as for discussions with you, Commissioner Huff, talk with the Compensation Committee. I left all of those open to the Compensation Committee. You'll also notice that I did eliminate one position on there. We did not backfill the programmer, system analyst position. I've taken over the role duties for that role to save us some well-needed money in the department. So we'll start here at the top. Last year, or actually two years ago, I consolidated lines 420 and 422, I kind of, or 424 and 420 into 424. And I did that because I felt office supplies and operating supplies were basically the same thing. So continuing with that, 420 line item has nothing in it. 422 is our computer supplies hardware. That's our consumables line. We also moved the web hosting into that line two years ago. That does stuff like keyboards, mice, monitors, speakers, things that the county goes through on a pretty regular basis. That line has been 10,000 traditionally, but I increased it to 15 this year because of two things. Number one, we are starting to see price increases due to some of the new tariffs that have gone into place. And number two, we did have to upgrade our web hosting during the elections when the raw amount of traffic literally crushed our web server. So we've upgraded both of those things. So that line went up a little bit. To compensate for that, I did decrease the line 424 by $1,000. Again, this is the line that we buy things like chairs, printer, toner packages, paper supplies. So I just decreased that line. I left hostess and luncheons at 150. That's generally been used for my employees to have a Christmas luncheon. And then we've also used it in the summertime for some type of summertime luncheon to just get pizza with it. Freight, I decreased that by 100. We have not used this line in a couple of years. And I increased that by 50. And then I noticed that we did actually apply something to it just last year. I'm going to leave it at 50, though. We don't ship a whole lot of stuff. That primarily goes to things that go to the depot for repair, so laptop computers. And I believe that charge that's on there is actually a laptop computer that we sent away for juvie justice. For maintenance, computer maintenance, I increased that one. We have a couple of things that have gone up in the last couple of years for maintenance pricing-wise. The pricing uncertainty, again, this is kind of a repeat of what happened in 2021 when we had 2020, nobody charged us the upgrades during COVID. And then after COVID, they gave us the 7% and 10% upgrades. And we're seeing that again. That's just the way it is. So I've increased that to 5,000 from 20 to 25. Things, that goes for things like our virtual machine backup software. That's just gone up by about 1,200 bucks. Our EA, it's called ESXI. That's our virtual machine software that runs that. That one's gone up by about 1,500 bucks. It's just, we're just having those. But on 42820, our software line, I actually decreased this one from last year. I took it down by 10,000 because we are planning in September to leave Sophos and switch to Sentinel One. This was something that we wanted to do last year, but because the election was happening, we did not want to make any major changes to the systems during the election. That software is about $9,000 a year cheaper. It actually gives us quite a bit more stuff for the money, too. So we will be making that transition in, we're going to start it at the beginning of September because they're willing to give us 30 days of stand-up before we can roll over. So then we'll pay for it in October. Let's see, repairs and maintenance, I combined that one into 428. That's the same that goes with the maintenance computer stuff. I didn't see why there needed to be two line items there. Postage, again, I decreased that one, cut it in half. We have not used any postage in quite some time. The IT department simply doesn't need to do postage. Travel education, I decreased the education by 1,500. My guys are not utilizing CBT nuggets like they were in the last couple of years. We tried to make it available to other departments. Nobody bid. Nobody wanted to use it. It's a computer-based learning for random things, like you can learn Word, Excel. They're just not using it. So I'm not including it this year. Increased it by that. On the telephone line, okay, so this is going to be an interesting one. Normally, this has been, oh, the telephone service. I'm going to talk about maintenance next. So telephone service, we are planning to replace the copper PRI line at the sheriff's office this year. The price on that is about $600 a month with the long distance. It's closer to eight. With what we did at the courthouse when we transitioned that, the long-distance service got eliminated completely. But the price of that PRI line replacement with the SIP service, like we use here, is actually $800 a month. So there's no way to get out of paying more for that, unfortunately. We are planning, if we kept the copper lines, we projected that that would go up more than the $200 a month increase. It actually looked like it might double. They actually tried to do that to us two years ago. We signed a three-year contract. We're back on the original pricing, but that contract's running out. We'd like to replace that with the same service we have here at the courthouse. And that brings me to telephone maintenance. This is an interesting one because in the last few years, we've been paying VPS $37,000 a year to hardware maintenance our equipment. Well, we're now at the point where we don't feel that we need to have VPS provide hardware maintenance for us anymore. And this $25,000 is a decrease of $12,000, and it's going to do two things. Number one, we've found a company that will sell us on-call service for that of our equipment. Over the last two years, we have not utilized VPS for almost any maintenance. Dorian does all of it in-house. So what we've done is we've banked 80 hours worth of on-call support from this company. Plus, we've banked a set of two of every single device in the entire phone system as spare devices. So we'll simply have an entire set of phone equipment standby, ready to build. That's one set for the courthouse, one set for the sheriff's office. It's where the two PBXs are. And then the other money in there, that actually only comes to about $9,500 bucks. The other $15,000 in there is the money that will be used to purchase the fiber line that will replace the PRI line at the sheriff's office. It's kind of our plan. It will pay for Lumen to bring a line in, the same that we've got here at the courthouse, and deliver that phone service. So there is some upfront cost to it, but in the long run, we'll end up saving money. That's kind of the same, how we did it here at the courthouse. Let's see, the next thing after that, internet phone maintenance. That didn't change. Our internet service, we've got a contract with those guys through 2028. I actually don't anticipate that going up even when we renew the contract in 2028. It's about what everybody around us is paying for internet service. Then for property acquisition, we've got two things in here. One, the Dell Power Store that we're using that we replaced about five years ago, we are at capacity again on that equipment. Rather than asking for a complete overhaul of that equipment, we feel we can get easily three, four more years out of it. We're asking for an upgrade on the storage on that. So we would double the hardware capacity on the storage. It would push us out at least two or three years to use that equipment longer. There is a, interestingly enough, Dell is now no longer doing, and I did include that in the packet, this purchase addendum, Dell is no longer doing, they used to send a company called EMC out to do their hardware upgrades. Now they are using our favorite vendor, Solutions Two with Motorola. So surprisingly enough, that's a fairly expensive item on there, but it's one of these ones that we don't really have much choice. We've got to have that equipment, and we need that power store. To offset some of that cost, I rolled into that software support line, and part of that decrease is that we are also going to be moving from iLand backup to Amazon Web Service backup. It costs a bit less, so there should be some buffer in there. And then last but not least is Office 2024. So Office 2019, in 2020, we made the choice to buy hard copies of 2019. In the interim, we've upgraded a few departments to Office 365. I don't feel that it is a reasonable request to ask the commission to give everybody in the county Office 365 because out of the 500-ish computers that we have, only about 100 of them are actually utilizing Office as a primary function. So what we've done is we've got 60 copies of Office 365 that primarily are used by departments like the assessors. The commission office has it, CIS, people that need to use Teams, Microsoft Teams. They interact with the state. Those 60, the other is we've asked for, I believe it's 40 additional copies of it. Let me just look here. Oh, 80, I'm sorry, 80. 80 copies of standalone Microsoft Office. Again, it's a fairly large investment, but 2019 is going to be end-of-life in October along with Windows 10. That's end-of-life. We've got to replace it across the network. So we're asking to buy, much like we did last time, we bought 150 copies or 140 copies. This time, we're offsetting that by the 60 copies of Office 365 that we have. So these are just 80 for those. These will be for things like the clerk's office, the auditing office, people that don't currently use Microsoft Teams, don't have a need for it, but will need to have the latest version of Office. The prosecutors are another example of that. And then, that's it for the IT budget. It's an 11% decrease overall in the B-line. And that's primarily due to changing a couple of softwares and not renewing the phone maintenance contract. I just feel like, again, we haven't utilized it in two years. It's time to just buy some spares and roll with it. So, any questions on that?
No, the only question I had real quick is on your, two years ago, we started the replacement cycle of all the computers.
Actually, four years ago.
Has it been that long?
It has been that long.
Wow.
We are coming up, this will be year number four. We've actually replaced almost every single computer in the county in those four years. We're down to just some specialty computers. There are a couple of machines around that we've kept legacy running for certain reasons because they don't have replacements. This year, we're not asking for any because last year, we replaced about 50. The year before that, we did about 50. And the year before that, we did about almost 200, about 175. So this year, we're not asking for any because the sheriff's department is actually in the middle of replacing a bunch out there under their own budget line. Scott Ames keeps that. So with that, that's been our project for this year. We aren't budgeting anything additional. It is one of the reasons I raised this operating supplies a little bit because we may need to buy a desktop here or there, a laptop here and there. That does come up from time to time. But in general, I did the same thing I did last year and told departments, unless you have equipment that's on our list of the five-year replacement cycle, you're buying it out of hand. You need to budget for it. So I think that some departments you'll see will have, you know, maybe 1,500 bucks in there for a desktop. It'd be an emergency situation kind of thing, or a new laptop for a new employee, something like that. But in general, no, this year, we are at year four. And next year, I got to be honest, I don't even see us replacing the vast majority like we thought at five years. We're absolutely going to get six to seven years of life out of those machines. So I think another large-scale refresh, we're probably two years out. And then, and again, we'll do it in a chunk. We'll buy like maybe 150 or 75 and 75, something like that.
Okay, that's why I was just checking on.
Yep. Okay, so that is the IT budget. Now, we'll talk about the emergency communications budget.
Hey, JD.
So this budget has no salary lines attached to it. It is all enterprise fund. This has a pretty hefty increase, almost an 18% increase over last year. Two big projects in there, but I'll go through the lines first and foremost. Number one, I did the same thing with this one that I did with the IT budget. I combined the lines for computer supplies and operating supplies.
80.
Okay, there, I'll give you a second. 422 and 424, I combined those two years ago because, again, I don't, I don't, 911 does not pay for office supplies, generally speaking, for any of the dispatch centers. The only thing that I would say that we could consider that is headphones. We do buy headsets for the dispatchers at times. So we don't buy paper, and we don't buy printers, and we don't buy that stuff. As far as operating supplies, though, this one, last year, I budgeted high to replace computer equipment at all the dispatch centers. We did that, so I've cut that line in half this year. I'd like, that operating supply line ends up being basically dispatched system hardware, console hardware, keyboards, mice. Again, it doesn't go bad terribly often, but it's nice to have a little bit of money in there in case we need that. I left the hostess and luncheons at 250. Again, this is one I use when people from the state come over, the SWIC or Next Gen 911 stuff we've been working on. I left that one in there. Software support, I kept that exactly the same. This is one that's going to change pretty heavy after we get Next Gen 911. So I know that you guys are aware, the state's been working on a way, or I should say the IPSCC has been working on a way to purchase Next Gen core services for all of the counties. We'll know on July 10th if that's a done deal. Once that's a done deal, that line item is going to decrease by probably about 30% because a lot of this stuff, Rapid SOS, iSpy, ERS, this stuff that's in there, these are over-the-top 911 items, those are included in the Next Gen Core Services. So we will no longer have a lot of those pieces. We need them for now because I don't know how long it'll take to implement Next Gen 911. I'm guessing probably a year to 18 months. But that line item is going to go down, definitely going to go down. Postage, I decreased this. We did use this a couple of years ago to send out the notifications to all of the telcos that we had made changes to the resolution, but we haven't used it since. I left it at 20, or I took it down by half, 25. I don't anticipate us needing to send some of those letters, but, you know, every once in a while, we do get those. Travel, this one, I decreased it by 1,000. I still like to keep it at 2,500. I want to send one of my persons, my software analyst, law enforcement analyst, to the Motorola Summit. Unfortunately, it's in Orlando next year. It's not cheap, but it's one of those things that I think is very beneficial for him. He's went to the one in Dallas, Texas this year, and he came back with a list of certifications he wants to get. He's already halfway through them. He's been certified in Power BI. He wants to get certified in Crystal Report. He eats that stuff up. So that's the same reason I increased the education line in there because he wants to utilize some of those classes to learn these certifications. They directly, they impact the SPIL and the FLEX system. I did a little tiny increase of 500 bucks for the pricing changes on the electricity service at Chinese Peak, Sedgwick, and Eagan. It's not a whole lot. I did not, we did not anticipate, we did not see the anticipated changes in the electricity rates that we thought last year. They only went up marginally. We thought we'd probably get about a 3% boost, but it only went up about a percent and a half. But I did increase that just ever so slightly. On the US West line fee, we did increase that slightly. We just put in a new connection directly between the two cores that we're in the process of replacing. There's a connection between PPD and the sheriff's office direct. We were routing that through our fiber ring. The issue with that is that the fiber ring runs through Road and Bridge, and Juvi, and the courthouse, and Lander. We know, one, that the county is planning to get rid of the Lander building. And we know, two, last winter, a dump truck took the power line down at the Road and Bridge that severed the fiber. So we put a direct connection in there that circumvents the county fiber ring. Four failover. Cellular telephone, I left this one the same. That's for cradle points that we use in the towers for cameras. The Department of Land's fee, we left that the same, although it could change a little bit with the acquisition of that Kenport Tower, Chinese Peak lease, that Kenport Tower lease, 8100 and the Kenport lease, those are basically what we pay to rent the space to the Department of Lands. We think we can offset that Kenport one. If we do acquire that site, we will continue to rebuild the BIA and the BLM and Bingham County for their usage of the site. We may be able to offset that. All things to be determined in the long run. Okay, so maintenance Motorola. This is the one that I decreased considerably. And the reason for that is that our maintenance on Vesta for the next five years is included in that $1.05 million grant that I got. This year, the maintenance is included at 100%. Next year, it'll be included at 90%, the year after 80%, the year after 70%, the year after 60%. And once it's 50%, we will technically be at a point where we will need a refresh again. However, much like the other equipment, I'd like to get seven years of use out of it rather than five. But the IPSCC has rolled the cost of the maintenance for the equipment into the same grant that would bring Next Gen Core Services. So if that is adopted by IPSCC, we will never have to pay the maintenance on those at 100% rate ever again. So hopefully, that happens. And that goes along with our idea of consolidating and bringing in more counties. We're looking at bringing in as many as six additional counties onto the system. So it would be paid for by IPSCC and a boon to the county. And it would also, the maintenance on all that stuff would be covered by their respective counties. We don't profit from anything on that. Okay, and then, maintenance general, I decreased that by 5,000. That one is the one that I call the projects fund. It ends up paying for things like the generator maintenance guy, the HVAC maintenance guy. This year, there is a UPS PPD we'd like to replace, things like that, things that go bad year over year. That's what that line is. I did decrease it by a few dollars to try and compensate for these two big projects. And the two big projects at the bottom, the first one is the FLEX Spillman replacement. This is one that we got a 10-year deal on two years ago. We locked in the maintenance from being a 7% year-over-year increase to a 3% year-over-year increase by signing onto that 10-year deal. This year, we will purchase, that 315,000 is to purchase the new hardware for this. And I went, I went full boat. I wanted to eliminate, we currently have one server at PPD, one server at the courthouse, and they mirror each other. The one at PPD is not fault tolerant. It's not redundant. So what this one actually replaces two servers with three. It will have a failover, a dual-server system at PPD, and a single-server backup, which we're going to move to the courthouse, or to the sheriff's office's data room. We don't want it at the courthouse anymore. So that one is one that we basically bought and paid for already, or signed to buy and paid for already. And that's that replacement. By banking that over a 10-year deal, we'll have enough money to refresh the server hardware five, seven years out. However, my opinion is five, seven years from now, we're going with the cloud, and it's going to cost us less. So this is probably the last hardware that we're going to hold for this. And that's also, FLEX is an interesting one. When I think about 911, CAD in many other counties I've found is not always paid for by 911. In a lot of counties, it's paid for by the agencies. For example, one of the things that we have with that now is radio fees. 911 pays the user radio fees to connect to the statewide system, but we do not buy the agency's radios. We just don't do it. The agencies buy their own radios. We pay their service cost. I think with FLEX, this is something we have an opportunity to turn back over to some of these agencies. PPD, for example, is already paying for their maintenance. Two years ago, I asked Chubbix to pay for theirs, and they're paying for theirs. I think we have an opportunity to have the fire department and the ambulance district pay for their portion. Currently, 911 is paying for that. It's almost 25,000. 42,000 for the fire department, 25,000 for the ambulance district. I think we have the opportunity to possibly push those costs back. It's been a very unpopular opinion when I say that because the ambulance district and the contract they have with the county and how they feel. But I just wanted to let you know that I think that's a place we could save some money because those other agencies are paying those fees for themselves. So just so you're aware. And I think that we could bank some money on that. And the last one on this is the MPLS microwave phase two. This is, we did the phase one with ARPA funds last year. This is that one that Motorola came with the shocker on, handed me an unbelievable amount of money. They wanted to do this. It was almost $750,000. I simply told them, we just do not have that kind of money. There's no chance. We paid the last piece, I just submitted today for payment on that five-year deal for the PPD consoles that we bought. That MPLS piece is needed for us to stay on the statewide radio system network. We are actually going to, as a county, field a pinch in October when they move the master site. We will be down for as much as a complete day on the radio system. That'll be permanent if we don't get this MPLS piece. The disrupt group voted to take an interim upgrade to be allowing about another year's worth of time. Once the master site moves, they had planned to shut off all the T1-connected sites. This MPLS piece is the piece that replaces the T1s. We're simply going to field a pinch. There's no other way around it. But I'll tell you what I've done is I have engaged both the committee, the 911 committee, and I've engaged a couple of other vendors to start talking about what would it look like if Bannock County became our island and meant our own radio system, and we were no longer connected to the statewide radio system in Ada County. It's not a popular opinion. It's not a popular discussion to have. But it might be necessary. I mean, we're now at the point where Ada County has made enough changes and brought a lot of these sites along, and a lot of them have been able to keep up with it. This is the last piece for two or three years. And in two or three years, they're going to come back and ask us for a much larger sum. Motorola is getting ready to end-of-life the GTR repeaters that are in our sites, and they're getting ready to end-of-life the console lets that are in our dispatch consoles. In my opinion, arbitrarily, this gear still works. Radio's magic, but it's not rocket science. Well, it is, but in any case, this gear still works. They are arbitrarily, in my opinion, placing an end-of-life on it at 2030. And they're telling us at these radio meetings now, Bannock County's cost, and this is just Bannock County, including PPD, we're looking at almost $2.3 million to replace the radio consoles. That does not include the repeaters at the sites. The repeaters at the sites are probably double that. So we're talking about $6 million over four or five years. That we are not pushing that. We're not making that change. Ada County's making that change. And as part of that system, we either make the changes and come along with it, or we don't. The upside to what we've already accomplished with the new microwave, Ethernet-based microwave, and this MPLS, is that that would support a system of our own if we choose to do that. So I'm now starting those conversations not only with the Digby, but also with the 911 committee, chiefs and sheriffs. And I'm also starting that conversation with these vendors and saying, come in and talk to me about what can we do to become our own. And maybe we do it as the Digby Five Island. Maybe we connect to the North Valley system. I've talked with Tony from T-Ton Communications. I've talked with White Cloud Communications with Kenwood and Tate and said, we have to maintain interoperability, but what would it look like and cost us as a county if we went off on our own and disconnected from that state system? Now, again, that's an unpopular thing. The sheriffs, the first responders, they love the flexibility of that statewide system ring. I don't love that it's going to cost so much money. So I want to be able to bring to the board the options to say, here's what we have to do to stay. Here's what it might look like if we go off on our own so that we can make the best choice for us as a community with the money that we've got. And I would never come and ask for, you know, millions of dollars without having exhausted all of the additional items that I can say. If it's going to be $6 million versus $5 million, we can make a choice then. If it's $5 million versus $15 million, it's a different kind of decision to make. So I'm just starting those conversations now, just so you're aware. Those are like paradigm-shifting conversations. But it may be the way we need to go to maintain what we're doing here. So, other than that, do you have any questions about, it is an 18% increase. I've spoken with Christie. It sounds like we have enough in reserves to cover that. Again, this year, these two big projects are one-time deals. The maintenance on FLEX is rolled into that for the first year, but we budgeted for it going onward. And again, I like the idea of maybe pushing some of those costs back to agencies. Not a popular opinion, but.
Well, and part of the reason we may need to do that is because we do have very limited funds. Unless the county decides to supplement 911, which then means supplementing agencies.
Yep.
That's not necessarily a role that the county should have to take, so something to keep in mind.
Yeah, and the work with the IPSCC, again, that's going to put money back in our pocket because once we get a Next Gen Core Services implementation, the line item for 47401, the US West EPN fees, those are gone. Those immediately disappear. That stuff's included with it. And the same for the software support. That becomes decreased because we will get those over-the-top services as a bundle. So, you know, there is a potential savings in there, possibly as much as $150,000 to $200,000 per year, once that's implemented. And every county's going to see that because their can of trunk lines will go back in their pockets. So there is savings coming. We're just not there yet.
But then those savings would need to be used to build up.
Yes.
To do some of these base projects.
To replace what we're using.
Because we're pretty slim on.
Yep.
Reserves. Additional reserves for a while.
Yep.
After hopefully.
Especially when I start to talk about, again, you know, we're four years out from having Motorola tell us this stuff's end of life. It's a lot of money. That's just all there is to it. And, you know, my feeling is public safety should deserve what they need to. And you know, I, my feeling is public safety should deserve what they need to function. But I also don't like the way that the current structure is where we, I feel like we get kind of told what to do, and it's go find the money to do it. You know, there's still counties around us that are struggling, Power County, Bingham County. I don't want to be the holdup on Ada's major projects, but I'm willing to be the thorn that says, "Hey, why are we doing this?" And, you know, maybe, maybe we should take a step back and consider it. But they're moving along at their own pace, they have no problem for revenue in their 911 fee because they have 300,000 people in their county, so it's kind of the way it is.
Okay. Appreciate all your work.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I, I think, I think it's all doable. It's just one of these things, we've got to line them up and knock them down in an order, so. Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay. Thanks, Adam.
Thank you.
And I will go do the, if you email me the thing, I'll do it.
Yeah, we'll have a break.
The thing will pay. Thank you.
We discussed putting this online. We've not done that before, but if there's anyone watching that potentially would like to follow along, they can. So if we put it online, they would be able to. And it is public documents, so.
How would you do that, just put a PDF out there?
So we'll make a PDF, he's going to put it with your agenda requests, and then have it labeled, um, budget document, uh, department requests, something like that.
I might save us some phone calls, something.
Yeah. I told Adam we can't have any more Vannett County uniforms or shirts unless it says on the back, "King of the Nerds," "Prince of the Nerds," in their hierarchy all the way down to just nerd.
The, the biggest problem with most of that is the general public, including me, when he starts talking about all of these acronyms and everything else, it's so...
It's nerd, that's why he's "King of the Nerds."
And i- if you were watching this and didn't have any background, you kind of go... If there is a PD, PDF document, if they want to look at it without listening to the whole, you know, the gamut of his discussions, could tell you truth, I know quite a bit about it, but it's easy to get lost in all that, so I don't know. I'm not certain, I'm not necessarily open to having everything out there, full disclosure.
This'll just be the, the spreadsheet.
Just a spreadsheet, yeah.
Because the backup isn't, isn't scanned in.
Yeah.
It's just the budget sheet.
If they want to look at that, you know, I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Talk about, he's got a passion for, for his department, Holy Cow. And page numbers are just a little like, I already see them.
They'll be bigger next time.
Come on up.
At least you have them.
Historical's page 53.
I'm having to stare at them to try to figure out what they're looking at.
I'm excited, silence, my phone. I read the door. I'm afraid I was supposed to submit an amended budget, but I don't think we got too bad. So I have some amendments to put on the one that was turned in, if you haven't done those already. Can you please not fully commit her with the budgeting process for all these lines and figures, but I know which ones to remove.
Yeah, if you want, if you've got additional copies for us?
Uh, I just have the one that I lined through.
Let me just make notes.
I can add one to you.
No, we're good, just go ahead. We'll just make notes, and then if we need to, then we can get another one, so.
The amendment is on something called RK Sheets FY 2026. And it shows a total ask of 176,624 at the bottom.
Let's make sure we're on the record, and are we still going? Okay, if you'll just introduce yourself, then we'll get formally started.
Oh, okay. You need to remove the line that's 26,800.
Okay. So on, on the capital portion, 90600, the last item, zero that out.
And that changes the total at the bottom to 159,824. And I'd be glad to explain that to you when we get to that point.
Go ahead and introduce yourself.
Oh, sorry, I'm Arlen Walker. I'm the president of Vannett County Historical Society, and we currently are in a search for a new director. The previous one has been terminated for cause.
So any, any significant changes from the prior year?
So last year, last year we had a budget request of $93,000, and the request this year for you guys is 149,824, is that correct? That's that one line item that shows the historical system.
Oh, yes, 149,824.
So what all makes up that $56,000 increase?
Uh, well, we have, we've had to purchase additional storage units, which is a large container, and the museum visitorship has increased to the point that we, we usually get by in the winter with two full-time people and a part-time person, and we need to probably keep three people during the winter now, uh, with one of them slightly more than part-time. And of course, costs have gone up, salaries have gone up, and things like that. To be honest with you, if we're going to spend 26,000 on something, I'd upgrade the ADA access, but that's, uh, that's something down the road.
So your intent is to take your part-time person and make them a full-time person?
Uh, well, or more, as needed. In the winter, we, we're open on Monday through Saturday, and the visitorship has increased, and we try to give every employee one day off a week, so we almost always have to have two on staff. And we do get along a lot of the time with volunteers and interns from ISU for other things like display changing, cataloging, accessioning, deaccessioning, and that sort of thing. And so we try to work supposedly with ISU for their intern program as possible. Normally, when I've been up there recently, which is almost every day, we have about five people on, three employees, and then some volunteers. So we're doing our best to keep the place going up to what it needs to be.
What, what are your attendance numbers looking like?
Uh, I could have brought those, but I don't think I did. They're, they're up considerably, um, probably increased by over a third to a half over previous summers.
Good. And then what are you doing with your entrance fees, or do you have entrance fees? Do you have entrance fees?
Yes. I, I didn't even think, see what they are. There's a, a charge for adults, a charge for children under a certain age, veterans, and anybody with a, with a food card, get in for free. And we split the admission. See, we now manage the fort in the small, the, uh, Pocatello Junction complex, which is owned by the city. We manage that fort, the city pursuant to an agreement with the city in 2017. So now we have one point of admission, one gift shop, and so on. And we split the, the take with, with so much goes to the city budget for the, to the fort. The city has a, are you all familiar with how that complex works?
I am.
The, the land the museum owns is owned by the county. The land the Frontier Junction Town is on is owned by the city, as is the fort hall replica. And so the city has a budget for that, and they, they pay for the maintenance upkeep and the utilities and things on the fort part of it, and the maintenance and upkeep on the small town, which we manage and work with them to do. And then the actual museum proper, its storage, uh, the museum basically belongs to the county at this point. I don't know if you're familiar with that agreement or not, although it was built by the society, but the contents belongs to the Historical Society. So it, it's a complicated maze I fall in a management position. And a few years ago, you know, they opened up the South Vannett County Museum, which I think is a boon to the county in Lava. And at that point, I looked at some of the old records, uh, our society backed that at that point, and our budget was cut by a certain amount to provide money for the South Vannett County Museum.
Which currently we give South County $12,000.
Right.
And then we give, um, this facility, this year $93,000, last year was $89,000. But we, we also pay for additional, um, when they need storage, um, storage lockers, I'm not sure that's the correct term, um, we'll buy those, we've done those over the last few years as well.
Now this year, we purchased a large container that we're, we're currently sitting on the sidewalk in front of the museum, but we're going to move it around back. And it has to be, one of the problems with artifacts and furniture and historical items is they require strict climate control. You can put farm machinery under a shed, you can put metal stuff in anything that's going to change with the weather, but anything that is subject to heat, cold, humidity, and so on, has to be climate controlled to preserve it. And we have a lot of that stuff. All the best stuff is in the maintenance of the museum building, but so it's, it's a challenge keeping up with it all and keeping it staged in such a way to tell the story of Vannett County.
Okay. Any questions, Ken? Well, I guess my, my hard question of it is, is your, basically you're increasing your, whatever your contract, uh, you're basically a third. You're going from, what, $89,000, $93,000 to 100, close to $150,000, which is a third higher. I would love to see, uh, is the people coming through there, your entrance, is it up a third? I mean, try to help justify a third higher, 33%. And with that, I'd love to see the receipts at the gate or the people, the entrance, is there something else we can do to help buffer that? I, I, I guess I'm concerned about, I mean, that's a third, that's, that's tremendous, that's really high for me. So I guess I just, I'd love to see some more information, if you could get it to us about your, what's the word, the, the people who are coming through the door, your admissions and...
Oh, the, the gate receipts.
Yeah, the gate receipts, to see, is it up a third? Have you got a third more people coming through there versus last year? It would help that justify that, that increase. And I guess I would love to see the policy of who gets in for free. You know, how you're doing all of that, and just say, is, is 50% of your people getting in there for free?
No.
Um, I would love to see that justification there, too.
Well, our society membership, part of their membership allows them free access.
Okay.
Because Historical Society basically, as a group, own the contents of the place.
Okay.
And they raised the 500-something thousand that built it. I could get you figures of gate receipts, say for this, go January to the present or something.
Well, I'd, I'd like it compared with the last two or three years to help justify the, the additional help. And I'm not refuting that maybe it's not necessary, but right now, I have no juris- justification for all of a sudden jumping that up there unless you're, if, if your gates are that much higher, then that helps that, so.
Yeah, I can, I can get that information to you.
And follow that, to follow that...
Of course, we all want as much as we can get.
Right. To follow that up, your, your fees, when were the last time they changed? Your adults are six, youth are four bucks, your individual memberships only 25? Uh, when were the, when was the last time those were changed?
Just a few months ago, in fact, last year. We have a family membership, we have a corporate membership that's a thousand. Uh, family membership, I think, is 25 and 30?
45.
45, right. And that renews every year. And our membership also gets anybody who's a member into any county museum, state museum, state park, all of that kind of thing as well. So we try to make as attractive as possible. Unfortunately, and I think this is a sad thing to say about Pocatello, is that historical complex is the best-kept secret in the city. We get people from all over the state to come in, and they say, "Well, we had no idea this was here." And our school visitation program has been up considerably as we've, uh, targeted school districts in Idaho Falls around the area. I don't know if you remember, the fourth grade teaches Idaho history, and I think eighth grade does as well. And we have a really good education program that we added, put on by, by our new fort manager, to actually make that a meaningful experience. They're not just walking around looking at buildings, rocks, and whatnot, but they get a tour, they get little diet classes and things to experience stuff. And it's, we've really upgraded the whole system to be more, more of a, "Let's come in and take part," rather than "Let's walk around and look at old people's junk." I mean, that's kind of a crude way to put it.
Okay. The, the one thing I'd like to see is, and it, we don't have it here, but I'd like to see the revenue. Uh, you know, where, where is your money coming from, from your memberships? And if we are getting a lot of out-of-towners or school districts coming in, are you collecting revenue from other places besides, I mean, Vannett County is providing this to tourists.
Right.
And for maybe people from outside of the county, is there any revenue coming in from that? I'd like to see how the revenue is compared to, uh, you know, just your expense side.
Revenue streams, I know when they bring a class from the school district, they pay so much per kid, and we do have a, a, a rate. I, the schools, the schools around the city are in different neighborhoods, and there are affluent neighborhoods, and there are less affluent neighborhoods, so we do take an allowance for that, uh, to give as many young people as good an experience as possible. Like when certain schools come in, we check what their population is, and then the gift shop's not open. Because I don't like to see little kids with 50 cents in their pocket, see the kid with $10 in his pocket, buy an arrowhead or whatever. And maybe that's just my personal bias, but I, I want all the children to have an equal experience, and none of them to be left out for any reason. But I can get you the revenue stream, what is charged for class, what is charged for group tour, adults and things. We've had a drop-off on, uh, the tour companies easily bring people through for Yellowstone. Used to pull through here first, they'd always stop, and we had, you know, a busload of tourists from wherever, was quite a big thing, but they've changed their route now, so they go through Soda Springs and over Tin Cup or Teacup or whatever it is, because they hit the Oregon Trail Museum that's in that area. And that cut off quite a chunk compared to previous years, and we're trying to get that back.
Okay. It, just if you have a P&amp;L statement, a profit and loss statement?
Oh, I could get you a statement of the revenue streams, where they come from, and the totals for, what, you want a six-month period, or just this year, January?
Actually, a couple of years, just because, just to compare it with what you had last year, and it shouldn't be that difficult if you just...
It has changed, and of course, cost of living has gone up, and to get good employees, we have to find a stake in the market.
Yeah. If you just, because usually, a lot of the other people, like the one in Lava, part of their request was, we, we ask them for a financial statement, and if we could just do that, same thing, that will help us to understand the revenue side of the expense side. You can't look at one without the other.
Revenue of the expense side. This year will be a bit unusual because as with this $26,800 request, that was made without board approval or board permission or even knowing it was happening. There have been a number of things like that that have shot our expense budget up a little bit. We have a limit that up to $200, the director can use money to spend for what's needed, but anything over that amount has to be approved. And that, I don't want to get gossipy, but that's been overshot a number of times, and is one of the major reasons for our change in management, let me put it that way. I'm sure you've probably been barraged by letters of support and all that kind of thing. I have an email full of them, and I've just been responding with, you know, likability doesn't supersede conduct, and our director was let go for cause, and I'm leaving it at that. I don't want any chance of a lawsuit or any kind of defamation thing or anything, nor I'm sure do you.
Yeah. Good.
Good. Okay. Any other questions?
Contributions from City of Pocatello, they don't go to wages or anything like that at all? It just goes to the maintenance of the village, correct?
Yes, it primarily goes to the maintenance of the fort, and then we let the fort admissions pay for extra stuff.
Okay.
Like whatever. I know they take care of the power, the water, and the basic maintenance and upkeep. But their hands are tied in some respect because the fort has been designated a national historic replica. And that's like being on the National Historic Places. There are limitations as to what you can do and how they have to be done to preserve the situation of the fort itself as a replica. And that, of course, was all built by donations. You probably know that story back in the 60s. You know, Jack Albert and a bunch of folks were instrumental in that. And it's, as we're getting our advertising done better, it is, you know, it's picking up. We do have to close it during the winter because so many of the artifacts and the things from the trapper days and so on are extremely climate-sensitive. And they can gradually get cold and gradually get hot, but you can't have the doors opening in hot and cold, hot and cold, or... And we do have to replace things like hives and so on periodically. It's a big headache, actually.
Okay. Thank you, Arlen.
Yeah, well, thanks for having me. That list you sent on my email listed about 20 people coming in. Have they all been done or not?
No. We just started at 10 o'clock, and it's all day.
Oh, I thought it started at 10:30.
Yours did.
Yours did.
You did.
Okay.
But the other people are later.
And remember, keep an open mind and an open pocketbook.
All right. Thanks, Arlen. Good to see you.
Take your chance, come up and take a look around.
Thank you.
We're doing some good things up there.
Which one's next?
No, Assessor's is next.
What page do you think this year?
Probably two or three. Three. We have two pages. And Anita just texted, so she'll be here.